Waiting on Carrie.
Okay, I would like to call the June 15th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Board to Order, may have a roll call.
Figueroa?
Here.
Page?
Here.
Jalloway?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Ridsensky?
Here.
Regal?
Here.
Tinkopom?
Here, and we have a quorum. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Legions.
All right. Pledge of Legions. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And James, please read our Fenton Mission Beliefs and Bison Way Statements.
Our mission statement: To cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Fenton belief statements: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social and emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibilities. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. Next, we will now open the public hearing for the amended 2021-2022 budget. Leo, will you please read the attestation certificate of amended 2021-2022 budget preparation availability?
Sure, thank you. I, Leonel Figueroa, board member and secretary, attest an amended budget for the fiscal year 2021-22 was prepared and made available for public inspection for a period of at least 30 days prior to the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Leo. And Bruce, will you please present the amended 2021-2022 budget, which was prepared by the administration?
Sure. Just briefly, wanted to go through the process, and the process for the amended budget is the same as the original budget that was adopted back in September. But the tentative amended budget was presented in April, at the April 20th meeting, and we do follow the same procedure as the original adoption. And that includes posting the notice of the budget hearing and availability of budget for public inspection for at least 30 days prior to the budget hearing, adopting the budget at a public meeting held after the budget hearing, so we'll ask the board to act on that later this evening. We'll post the budget after it is adopted on the district website, and then submit the budget electronically to Illinois State Board of Education within 30 days of adoption. I can report out from the April 20th meeting, there wasn't a lot of changes with this final amended, tentative amended budget. We had some minor adjustments to our revenues, 1.7% up increase, or about $614,000. The majority of that was due to an additional payment of the, from the corporate personal property replacement taxes from the state of Illinois. That was really the change there, just about all of it on the revenue side. And the expenses went down modestly by 0.3%, or about $100,000, and that's just some final adjustments to the budget that we were able to reduce. Overall, we do have a projected surplus of about $714,000, and that's an increase from the projection in April of 1.5 million to 2.2 million. So that's the main changes from April 20th, and I'll open it up to any questions that you may have regarding the budget.
And also, are there any questions or clarifications needed? It's time for our audience members in attendance. Okay. So then, we will now close the public hearing for the Amendment 2021-2022 budget.
Is anybody here for this?
We will now open the public hearing for the e-Learning Plan Renewal. And that would be Jose, would you please present that?
Sure. So, you know, just briefly, this is a three-year plan that we were applying for. We're renewing this. This was done, oh, sorry. So this was done, you know, three years ago. We're reapplying to do this again for this upcoming school year, which will last for three years. This would be, you know, in case of an emergency.
Such as, you know, we, for example, in the spring, we had a water, water pipe break, and we could not have school that day, so we had an e-Learning Day. If there was a snow day in the past, it would have been a day we'd have to make up at the end of the school year. We would do that then. So this, this is simply that, to just renew, renew this process going in for the next three years.
Board member questions? We're good. And then, we, we are also going to open up to the public. So are there any questions or clarifications needed? It's time for our audience members in attendance.
Yes, cheers.
Up here, thank you for not making this a complete budget hearing. This is about the Radcliffe Senior Living.
I'm sorry, could you state, could you state your name? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Public comments will come in a bit. This is regarding the hearing for the e-Learning. No, no, please. Nope, no problem. There'll be another opportunity to do that.
Yeah, we'll call you up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. So with that, there's no comments on, from the audience in attendance regarding the e-Learning renewal. We will now close the public hearing for the e-Learning Plan Renewal. Now, we will return to the regular board meeting of Board of Education right now. Mary, do you have any public comments? Which is you, sir. Just premature. Yep, you bet. And as a general rule, public comments are limited to three minutes and 30 minutes per subject.
I will do the best I can to put a year's worth of work into three minutes. I understand. Thank you for all the work that you do. I understand that your job's not easy. I am here to speak about the Radcliffe Seniors and Students Program. My name's Alan, and I align with a lot of taxpayers when I say, I don't think there should be any troubled youth in our community. I don't think there should be any troubled youth in your school, and I'm against troubled youth in senior living facilities. I'm most of all against troubled youth at the Radcliffe Senior Center because I own and manage that facility. Forgive the theatrics, trying to make a point. I'm very much aligned with, with taxpayers on this. If I were to move in a troubled youth, my seniors would simply move out. They'd stop paying their rent, and I would have no ability to pay our 100 employees, our mortgage, and our real estate taxes. I'm speaking about young people because the senior space needs reform. Seniors thrive in engagement. In engagement with youth provides hope and important purpose. Any of you that have ever been with a young person understand how it makes you feel purposeful. Anyone with a grandparent, who has ever been a grandparent, understands the incredible value of that relationship. Stanford University is coming out for the next couple of years to document the wellness, health, and happiness of seniors in this setting so that these benefits can be shared around the country. All I need to do is figure out how to keep out troubled youth. And of course, I have, because I have, in fact, everything at stake. So we have quite simply five rules. These will be foster kids with no parents. So I'd love to help all foster kids. I can't. This program's about seniors. No crime, ever. No drugs, no alcohol, good grades. And the final filter is, they must raise their hands and say they want to do all the hard and good things that it takes to join the Radcliffe Vocational Academy, which will be the young people's portion of this program. In that program, they'll learn the soft skills and hard skills it takes to get out there, get, get jobs going, build their careers, choose a career. We're going to put them on a career path. We've already hired people to engage with the local business community and discovered endless opportunities for apprenticeship programs, government grants, and all sorts of other things to make these kids good productive citizens. I don't agree with all taxpayers who say that we shouldn't take these probably 30 foster kids and give them a high school education. I understand that that education probably costs something like $44,000. But here's what these other taxpayers aren't contemplating. When we turn that kid into a $60,000 wage earner, like the rest of us, they're going to pay $20,000 in income tax. They're going to blow $5,000 on sales tax. They're going to put another $5,000 into the American economy when we saddle them with a mortgage and make them pay a property tax. So we're going to ask you to invest about $40,000, forgive the round numbers, into a student who's going to produce 75% return on that investment year after year after year. If we happen to keep one of these people off of a welfare program, where it would cost the state of Illinois approximately $50,000 to take care of that person and their child, your $44,000 invested one time saves American taxpayers $80,000 year after year after year. We should all sell our stock and invest our money in you. No one can produce a return like you people can. My final theatrics: One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. All right, that'll close the public comments. And next, we go to recognitions, which is Sam.
Thank you. I'll just do it from here. This evening, as we all know, we have Rick Campick, our Director of Communications and Community Engagement. He's going to appear in a video here in a little bit, or otherwise known as Mr. Instagram, and maybe some other names along the way. But in all seriousness, Rick has done a tremendous job behind the scenes promoting everything that's great here at Fenton High School. The other area that he's really been a leader is with the statewide group INSPIRA. He's brought forward many different nominees for awards, and then they've actually been awarded. And so we're always well represented at the INSPIRA Award banquets. So, without any further ado, we're going to see Rick featured in the video. But thanks again, Rick, for putting these individuals forward and recognizing the work they do at sort of a statewide level. I know they appreciate it.
Good evening. INSPIRA is an acronym that stands for the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, and every year it conducts the Distinguished Service Awards Contest. The Distinguished Service Awards recognize individuals who make a difference in their school communities by promoting public education and enhancing programs and services. For the 2021-22 school year, the following Fenton nominees were given awards by the INSPIRA Committee. First is Matthew Lynch in the faculty category. After forging a strong relationship with the Chicago Bears, football coach and special education teacher, Matthew Lynch provided life-changing experiences to the students at Fenton High School, as well as our future students, students at schools across the region, and our local community members. First impressions are critical. High school football in the 2020-21 school year was delayed until spring due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Coach Matthew Lynch needed to keep his student athletes focused on positive activities. One such activity was to have his football players choose teachers who have a great impact on our school and to nominate them for awards. At the same time, the Chicago Bears created the High School Community All-Stars Program to recognize student athletes for their off-the-field accomplishments. Coach Lynch nominated two of his players, highlighting their robust community service activities, and an award-winning essay they had written about social studies teacher, Ms. Kelly Mullins. The Chicago Bears were extremely impressed, and both of the nominees were inaugural recipients of the Chicago Bears' new award. But throughout the process, the Bears were so impressed with Coach Lynch that they named him the NFL High School Coach of the Week when it was their turn on November 16th, 2020. A short segment on Coach Lynch and his incredible efforts for students at Fenton High School was shown repeatedly nationwide on ESPN for a whole week. Similarly, Coach Lynch was a rock star while being interviewed during a 10-minute WGN radio segment, and they don't give 10 minutes to just anyone. He talked up our school, his colleagues, and the mission of public education. Fast forward to this year, the 21-22 school year, and the Chicago Bears were looking for a site to host their Nike 11 On Tournament, which is a summertime tag football scrimmage and skills tournament. Having remembered their experience with Coach Lynch at Fenton, they decided to give him a call. Not only did Coach Lynch make it happen, but he also geared it towards schools with large underserved populations and all minority head coaches. The players received two Chicago Bear shirts to keep and vintage 1920s helmets to wear during their games. For many of these athletes, this tournament was the pinnacle of their lives so far. They were wearing Chicago Bears swag, while retired Bears players were watching them play for glory. And as we all know, students who are involved in an extracurricular activity feel more safe and more invested in their school, typically resulting in at least one whole letter grade higher cumulative GPA. And while working on another initiative, the Bears again kept Fenton High School in mind. In association with athletic or physical therapy, the Bears called up Coach Lynch and awarded Fenton High School with $12,000 to upgrade our athletic training room. This opportunity allowed us to showcase our commitment to finding budget-friendly solutions. Finally, as, as all of us know and are never going to forget, Matthew Lynch had a vision for honoring our veterans, and it was an elaborate ceremony to the tee prior to a home football game in September. He approached the Bears, and he had a big request. Due to a steady relationship with positive results, the Bears agreed, and they partnered with us. The Bears donated $5,000 towards Bensonville and Wooddale first responders. They sent retired players to our ceremony, helped us produce free giveaways for the spectators, and they connected us with prominent veterans that we can honor on the field, including retired Army Lieutenant Colonel Ryan Yancey, who was working in the Pentagon on the day of the attack. More than 70 active or retired first responders and military personnel were on field during this ceremony, and the bleachers, bleachers were packed. In total, $12,200 was collected and donated to our local first responders. This ceremony caught the attention of Fox 32, and they produced two segments with us, NBC 5, and WGN TV Channel 9. Coach Lynch game-planned these interviews and had players at his side to experience the selfless advocacy of our heroes and the preservation of their storied sacrifices. All these monumental accomplishments involved accurate storytelling, clear communication and planning with school officials, mindfulness of colleagues, mentorship of students, and positive relations with a giant private sector partner. Our next recipient is the Fenton Counseling Department in the team category. In late 2019, Illinois became one of the first states in the country to mandate all high school seniors submit a free application for federal student aid, otherwise known as the FAFSA. It was a lofty expectation. And then COVID strike. Nobody saw it coming, and students were suddenly at home, trying to figure out how to be more responsible with their own time. But our Fenton counselors found a way to connect with their students and students' families. The Illinois Student Assistance Commission awarded Fenton High School a bronze medal of, a bronze medal recognition of excellence for having a high rate of FAFSA completion in accordance with this new graduation requirement. Fenton Council, Fenton's counselors include Rachel George-Ackis, who's our college and career counselor, as well as Nancy Connor, Mia Whalen, Freddie Canoe, Ron Cuellar, Paul Welsh, Sarah McDougall, Melissa To, Kimberly Lund, and Eileen Roberts. Each and every one of them have a strong bond with students and contributed a great deal towards this big initiative. The team was persistent in their weekly one-on-one meetings with students during their FAFSA presentations at Bison Time and during their numerous public FAFSA workshops. Fenton's transition to a hybrid schedule helped, as did the reduced restrictions on using our building for public events, but it was really the professionalism and the genuine passion from our counselors that led to this success. And let's be real, the FAFSA is a complicated process, includes a lot of legal terms and tax documents that even the average person probably struggles to comprehend, let alone go and find. Our students definitely unfamiliar and wouldn't even have access to their parents' tax documents. So our counselors, they, they leverage digital platforms like Zoom to connect with parents at a wide range of times throughout the day to ensure that parents could get their questions answered. Their admirable work in communicating this new mandate and guiding students through the complex process with a high rate of success bodes well for our school image and the trust that our families have in Fenton High School. Next is Mr. Joseph Velez in the community category. Schools and park districts share a common mission of providing safe and productive activities for children, although the timing and methods are obviously different. Bensonville Park District has always been a steadfast partner with Fenton High School. The Parks Director, Joe Velez, went above and beyond during this COVID-19 pandemic. When a vaccine became available, the Park District was an instrumental partner in organizing, staffing, and getting the word out on our numerous large-scale vaccination drives here at Fenton. Mr. Velez himself was present at all of our events and was an exemplary ambassador who put visitors at ease in this great time of stress. As restrictions began to ease up, parkland became, became pretty valuable a hot commodity, because at the time, they had just decided it was, it was acceptable to not wear a mask in close proximity while outside. So there's a lot of demand. But even as the indoor restrictions were starting to be reevaluated, they didn't get fully rolled back right away. And Fenton obviously has some space issues. Director Velez was very considerate in staying in touch with Fenton and prioritizing our needs for additional space due to these varying regulations and social distancing requirements. For the first time since 2019, we were able to host, we were able to organize a homecoming dance this year. We also had a Latin flavor mixer, which is a dance. Director Velez ensured that the Park District's large outdoor tent remained available for our use, and he only charged the school for expenses that the Park District incurred. As the 2021-22 school year continued, he remained in constant communication with Fenton and allowed for timely rental when we found ourselves in a bind to fit a particular sport or club or public event safely in our antiquated building. Even better, he found a way to make a joint publicity victory focusing on family and education. These generous actions allowed Fenton High School to move more towards normalcy and to provide our entire community with a sign of unity and shared commitment to our children. Congratulations to all of our recipients, and thank you so much for your incredible contributions to Fenton High School.
Congratulations, everybody. And next, we go to informational items with Distech 100. James?
Absolutely. So, as promised, our Strategic Plan 2.0 action plan for this upcoming school year is complete. I'm going to invite all the administrators here to get to the mic over there to get ready for your part of the presentation. Real quick, board, we've been working this semester, as you know, for the action plan. What is an action plan? It's really this way. There's, there's goals, and to achieve those goals, you need plans. And that was a task of the administrators, is to come up with those plans. So, we're going to go ahead, but before we get started, as promised, we have a dashboard so you guys could hold us, keep us accountable. And I'm going to ask Jim Batson here in a minute after I read these themes, these goals here, and who will present, to put up that dashboard. So, real quickly, here are the strands that the Strategic Plan Committee, which consisted over approximately 50 individuals, including the board members, has established. Number one, teaching and learning, and that's going to be covered by Kate Ward, student life by Sam, social emotional growth, Jason Madel, diversity, equity, inclusion, Jose, communication, collaboration, it's Rick, and securing the future. So they will present. But in all six, there was approximately 16 individuals that worked on the action plan. But Jim, before we get started, could you put up the dashboard and go over that, if possible, or I could go over it as you manage along. So, real quickly, the strategic dashboard is on our website, and anyone in the public could see it. What is a strategic plan? That is our North Star. That is our pathway. That is our road. That's our rail tracks for the next three years. We put it up there, and for each themes, for example, this first theme here, teaching and learning, there are six goals. And with each goal, Jim, if you could show us, let's look at goal number one. There are three action plans, and our goal is to complete that for this year. So each year has goals and action plan. And we even put up a percentage of, of where we're at in regards to completion. We want to hit 100%. That's our goal. Is it possible? I think so. Not in all cases, but we're, we're going to do our best, kind of like strategic plan 1.0. So this is 2.0. Again, we're very excited. I'm going to invite Kate Ward to come up and go over theme number one, teaching and learning.
Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be here. So, the first theme is teaching and learning. We have a very ambitious six goals. I think it's the most goals of any of the different themes, but I think it makes sense since that is the business that we're in, which is teaching and learning. I think what you'll notice is that we have some of the themes that are continuation of a lot of the good work that we've been doing from even before the strategic plan 1.0. But then, we have a couple of new goals that really came out of the pandemic and some things that we saw that we need to bolster for our students, and also continued, but even renewed passion for post-secondary opportunities for our students. So, I'm going to run through these goals. I'm not going to go through every action plan. You can see it for yourself, but if you have any questions, you know, of course, I can answer them. So, goal number one can really be summarized by intervention, right? And I think this is what I was alluding to with the pandemic. We know that there's always been a gap between some of our students, their achievement, and we know that the pandemic really exacerbated that for many of our kids. And so, our goal with goal number one is really to put a renewed focus on MTSS, which is multi-systems tiered, multi-tiered systems of support. So, we have a lot of supports at Fenton already. One of the first things we need to do is just evaluate what we already have. Jason Madel is already starting to lead that up and take a look at what do we have in place, what's strong about what we have, what do we need to improve, and then what are we missing? We're also going to take a look at other schools that are like Fenton to see what else they have in place that we can copy, that we can make better, that we can make our own, and really figure out what are the supports that we need to give our students. So that's goal number one. Goal number two, again, is the first part of looking at post-secondary. So we know that we already have a really robust AP program. I think it's one of the greatest things about Fenton. Many of you know, I taught AP World History for 16 years, so it's close to my heart. And I think we have one of the most, for the size of our school, we have one of the most robust AP programs, probably in the nation. But we also have dual credit, right, which Michelle has been keeping you apprised of. So we have to figure out, how do these two systems really work together? We need to strengthen our, our relationships with COD, with Elmhurst University, look at other universities that we can partner with, and think about what role does AP play for our students, what role does dual credit play for our students, and how can we get the most for all of our students in those two areas? So we're going to do a valuation of those programs, a rollout, a plan. And so that's goal number two. Goal number three is a continuation, right? This is best practices in teaching and learning. So this is something we've been working on. We're going to continue. Last year was so tough, getting back with the pandemic, and we did a lot of great work. But I think to continue to evaluate things like blended learning, personalized learning, inquiry-based, problem-based, we have so many things going, we want to evaluate. inquiry-based, problem-based, we have so many things going we want to evaluate, we want to deepen our understanding of that for next year. So that's our plan for teaching and learning. Goal number four is something that I'm very excited about, student voice. You heard a lot about this this year already. Again, Jason started a student voice committee where students came in, and I was lucky enough to be at a lot of these meetings, and they were invited to talk about what they wanted to at Fenton. Dress code, the fact that they needed access to water and water bottles, graduation speeches. We want to bring that to the curricular level. We're going to start a student learning council. We're going to have students hopefully represented from all different grade levels, all different academic levels, all different programs, so students from multilingual, students from SED that can come in and tell us how is their learning going? What's working for them in the classroom? Where do they feel empowered? Where do they feel good? What are some areas that are not motivating for them? Doesn't mean we're going to change everything that they tell us to, but you know, we want them to have a voice and learn from them. So that's really one of the goals, is bringing that student voice into the curricular level. Goal number five, this is really tied to goal number three in my mind, continuing those teaching and learning practices and then following that up with professional development for our teachers. We had a great start on all of that. Our instructional coaches are doing a great job. We read the book Grading for Equity this year. So teachers met in cohorts, which was groups of about 30 teachers from all different departments, and they talked about those different grading practices. What we want to do next year is have cohorts where teachers from different departments talk together. The next week, we want to follow that up with a department meeting so that the math department can say, hey, this is what we talked about last week. How does that work in math? And then the next week, Math 1 will meet as a PLC and talk about how do we implement this in our class? So really trying to take this good work that we're doing and getting it down into a more granular level. And we'll do that mostly on Monday mornings and on Teacher Institute days and things like that. And then finally, the goal that I was alluding to at the beginning, the career pathways, right? So this is a real passion that we have around having students explore what their passions are in post-secondary, because we really believe that if they can find their passions, it's going to make their high school experience and their studies in high school even more relevant for them. So Michelle's going to be heading this up. She has some great ideas about different resources that we want to bring in to make sure that our counselors, our students, their parents, they can be connected not only to colleges, but also information about careers, also information, and connected to different local businesses and all, have that all easily accessible. Continue to develop our pathways aligned to ISB, and then also to make sure that our kids have some experiences beyond the walls of Fenton. So some career experiences. We'd love to get some endorsements so that our students can walk out of Fenton already with some credentials and the careers of their choice, and to give them more opportunities for internships. So a lot of exciting things happening there. So that's just a little bit of what we have planned for teaching and learning.
Before we turn it over to you guys, ask questions here. If you see there, the academic year, this strategic plan year starts basically July 1st. Kids get in here August 15th. So you're seeing some of the percentage completion there. How could it be the school year didn't start yet and you got 30% done? Well, we're doing our homework early. So you'll see that just, but for the record, hasn't officially started until July 1st. Sam?
Very good. So we're going to move on to student life, and I am pleased of the six categories here. Student life is its own category, because if you think about it, it's really the student experience that we're trying to enhance here in so many ways, whether it be academically or just the overall experience. And we know that the more students are involved, the better they do academically, the better experience they have. So student life, basically, we're looking at the quality of programs that we are offering and participation levels. So in many ways, what do we talk about? Activities, clubs, you know, those types of things where kids get to experience things they don't normally get to experience. And you've seen firsthand all the recognitions we've had. And we have athletic recognitions, and rightfully so, we're making great progress. But just the amount of activities, as you've seen, where kids are going to state and kids are state champions, representing us all over the country in different ways. And what we just want to do is enhance that. And so what we want to do though is we want to collect more data and see, okay, what, who's in clubs, who's in activities? Now naturally, that's a little bit more challenging than just athletics, because in athletics, you have tryouts, you have rosters, you have teams. Activities, depending on the activity, could be more fluent, right? I mean, some of the more established clubs like Chess Club is one thing, but what about like Hiking Club? Someone may be there one time, not another. But what we want to do is collect all that information, store it in our Power School data system, and then look at it, disaggregate it, and see where are our gaps? What are our participation rates? Are there equity issues there? Whatever we can learn from that, we want to be able to do. But in order to do that, we need more oversight, more intentional support of these programs. Because quite frankly, these programs are thriving, but we want to provide, facilitate that, be more coordinated in our efforts, and see where that takes us. So much so, Julia Bray here tonight, you'll see, on the consent agenda, Assistant Principal for Operations and Student Life. So we're hopefully, you know, that goes through, that'll just enhance what we're doing. But that'll be one of her tasks, honestly, is let's collect all this data and look at it. And not just so we can come up with a percentage, but just so we could see where our gaps are and how we can continue to look to improve. Then we talk about what kind of supports do we have for sponsors? You know, much like in athletics, you could think of like preseason, all the sports, in-season, postseason. We can do the same thing in activities. In fact, we've started doing this anyway. So we kind of all get on the same page, we're collecting the same information, and we have a point person that can really devote the time and the effort, who's been involved in a variety of activities to provide those types of supports. You know, things like a self-evaluation, an evaluation of each program, so we could see where, what we can do to continue and improve. But these are all things that we've have started, but thanks to the strategic plan, we really want to make it a reality and part of our typical practice. So that's the sort of the second major area we are looking for. Third is sort of our representative groups, much like Kate was talking about, student voice, listening to our students. We've gotten better at that. That's sort of become part of what we do. So things like the Principals Committee, which I started last year. We're going to continue with that to expand, have more frequent meetings, that's on there. The other thing is, we want to establish what's called a Council of Leaders. If you think about all the activities we have, even in sports, we have leaders, we have captains, we have presidents of organizations. But when do they all kind of come together where they can talk and we could say, how can we make the place better? How can we improve our experience? That's what we want to do, and under Julia's leadership, along with Todd Becker, bring these leaders together and listen to them also, from the perspective of extracurriculars. So that's the other area. And thirdly, as you know, we'll take our students up against any students in the state in whatever organization there is. But we want to get them involved in leadership experiences with other students in similar positions around the area. And so we're going to be seeking out those opportunities, whether it be the conference, whether it be through professional organization, whatever it might be, student leadership, student summit, those types of things. We want to give them the opportunity to get out there and really represent us and grow and take back ideas that they can learn from other students. So that's what we're looking at with student life.
Thank you, Sam.
Just a quick question. I might be premature in this question. Is there a part where we do alumni connections as well? Is that coming up?
Right, that's coming up in one of the later ones, right?
Next one, we have social-emotional growth, Jason? Followed by DEI, Jose, then Rick with communication, and Bruce. Bruce is the caboose.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Ward, for speaking highly of me just as we practiced. I appreciate that as well. So I get to speak to you about social-emotional learning tonight, and we have two goals with three actions as well. So I'd like to go ahead and get started, if that's okay with you. Our first goal is to continue implementing and improving the nine through 12 social-emotional learning program, which would include the five domains, restorative practices, and trauma-informed practices. So a good amount of what we're doing is also going to be a continuation and a hopeful improvement of things that we already do, and we will be adding a few other things. This one, the first thing I'm going to speak about is a continuation and a hopeful improvement. So we started a restorative practices discussion group last year for our staff. Restorative practices is kind of an alternative to traditional discipline when it's appropriate, where we allow a student to maybe work through a problem and try to restore the harm that they caused. So the idea would be that it went well, it was well-received last year with our staff. So this year, we would like to go ahead and invite our students, since they are the ones who are most affected by this and the ones that we need the most buy-in from. So that would be a hopeful improvement on something that we're already doing. Something new that we need to make sure that we focus on for Action Two is small support groups throughout the day. So we do a pretty nice job with some larger groups. We do a nice job with a lot of one-on-one work. We need to really beef up our smaller groups of eight to 10 students during the day. And this would include everything from newcomers to the country, students who have dealt with some type of trauma, students who are dealing with truancy, anything. Anything goes. This is part of our MTSS plan, which Ms. Ward spoke about, and it needs to happen. And this is something that we need to build, maintain, and improve upon each year. I think social-emotional needs have really become more necessary over the past couple of years. And so this is something that we can do during the school day. That's really kind of the key for our kids, in my opinion. Action three for goal number one would be to redevelop our multi-year action plan with Castle. Castle is an organization that we use that supports us. They provide guidance, they provide resources. Got to cheat here. It stands for the Collaborative of Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. So Castle is an organization, professionals, they will come in, consult with us, we will tell them what we need, what we're looking for, they will guide us in the right direction. So we're not making things up. We're going by things that have fidelity, that have been proven, that have data, and they aid us in our journey here with social-emotional learning. Goal two would be to continue to measure the effectiveness of the social-emotional learning program and regularly report the progress to the Board of Education. Actions one and two are similar. They're all about collecting data on the effectiveness of this. One of these goals, or I'm sorry, one of these actions is to collect data on groups that we already have. The second one is simply to collect the data on the groups that we are forming. And so some of these are relatively easy when it comes to grades and attendance rate. We can simply look at, okay, this is improved. Other things are a little bit more difficult. We're depending on student feedback to tell us, did they get something out of the group? Was it what they were looking for? Things like that. So the theme that I'm hearing so far tonight is data. It's big here, too. We're investing in this, we're putting time and energy into this, we need to make sure that our students are getting what they need out of it. And if they're not, we need to be able to pivot and make sure that we are giving them what they need about this. And the final action would be to measure the progress of the plan and to continue implementation of the Castle standards. So that is us saying that we are committed to this organization, Castle, which we've used in the past with success, and that we are going to continue to monitor how we are doing. They will help us with that. They will let us know if we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, the way we're supposed to be doing it, and if not, we will adjust in that manner also.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Next up, is it Rick with collaboration? Oh, no, I'm sorry, DEI, Jose, apologize.
So our Equity Action Plan is currently a one-year plan. We're looking to develop a three-year plan to match the work that we did with Strategic Plan 2.0. Our Equity Action Plan 2.0 will actually be formally developed and finalized on June 20th and 21st. So Monday and Tuesday of next week, we're going to meet as a district Equity Leadership Team, which is comprised of roughly 30 individuals, to review our goals for each strand and have an action plan ready for the beginning of the school year. We recognize that this past year was tough on our staff, so we did some, moved some timelines back to try to accommodate our team. Our current plan is on our district website under the district tab. It has Equity Action Plan. And specifically, we have five different areas that we're looking at. Systems, we wanted to make sure to have systematic and continuous development toward advancing equity within all policies, processes, procedures, initiatives, decision-making, and fiscal responsibilities. Teaching and learning, to intentionally embed equity-driven pedagogy in curriculum, resources, instructional approaches, the use and consideration of assessments and academic programming for the purpose of advancing equity among all students. We also have a section under Student Voice, Climate, and Culture to consistently seek students' feedback and experiences on organizational culture and climate. We have another one on professional development to provide a continuum of professional learning and growth opportunities for all of our staff in pursuit of educational equity. And our last one was Family and Community as an agency, to partner with our families and the communities for authentic opportunities to serve the students, the school, and the district. So we did work in all those areas. You know, specifically, for example, we gave professional learning, we did a PDE equity statement, which is read at all of our professional development for our staff. Family and Community as Agency, we have an Equity Advisory Committee comprised of parents and students. Teaching and learning, we did Grading for Equity, which is a book study that was led by our team here. We have systems in terms of looking at our DEI statements and definitions, as well as developing a hiring and recruiting statement for our district. And then, of course, you know, again, just keep throwing flowers and bouquets towards Mr. Madel. You know, he did have a student voice group that met regularly throughout the year and spoke about issues of equity as well. So we look forward to meeting next week with this group of roughly 30 individuals and continue to analyze what we're doing now to provide an equitable educational experience for all of our students. And we will have more information for the Board in July, once we finalize our plan next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Mr. Campick here next, but I also wanted to recognize Mr. Coranda. Dr. Coranda is also in the house there, and Dr. Coranda was also in the theme, teaching and learning. Is that correct? So I just wanted to recognize that, and there's, of course, Julia Bray. Who else? Michelle was also in SEL and teaching and learning as well. So it's really a team effort. We have presenters, they're the key leaders per each strand, but it's composed of two or three other administrators. Mr. Campick here next with Communication, Collaboration, and Community.
Jose, where's the dashboard, the Delt dashboard?
It's on our website, under District.
Under District? No, but for Delt, is there too?
Yeah. Actually, it has a list of individuals that are in Delt from last year. This year, we'll have some new players as well. But yeah, there's a listing.
Okay, okay.
I want to say it's right underneath our district tab.
Done the dropdown, just scroll a little. So I didn't want that gentleman earlier to be the only person who walked up at the wrong time. So I was just, unity, you know? So I'm going to be talking about the Communication and Community Collaboration goals and actions. A lot of the goals are compound sentences that are very long and ambitious, so some of the stuff will be building upon itself in trial and error. So the first one, most important, is to continue to improve and enhance our effective communication between Fenton and our families and our community, including positive stories, positive information, relevant details, and opportunities. So in the action plans, one of the most important things is our referendum, our facility updates. People need to be informed as to what stages we're in, when things are starting, when things aren't happening, when they're being modified, when they're going to be in their new classrooms, stuff like that. We also want to retool our approach to the alumni, as you'd asked about before. That includes creating some new website portals and thinking about how we want to engage with them. And as a fun little story, the young woman that we met earlier, one of her jobs, one of her jobs is working to eliminate invasive species in soil restoration. So while she and I were talking out there, and as you all heard, she's an alum, I told her there's a garden club that maybe she might want to come and guest be at. And then suddenly, she started asking what classes actually do that. So now we just possibly, hopefully, got some field trips and a guest presenter who is from our own building, who shares the same lineage and stories as our students. And then as far as our current students and families, we want to explore and replace our website, as I presented last month. So those are for goal one. Goal two, strengthen our partnership with our center districts, particularly in a lot of the timing and coordination and collaboration. So the action plan- So, the action plans range in variety from sharing our schedules, tentative and final at certain times, so we can all be aware of what's going on, not step on each other's toes and try and be in sync, as well as collaborate on our curriculum ambitions, try and align them, work together, make those transitions good. We want to introduce Fenton's SEL approach into our eighth-grade transitions, so when we have those students come into the building, give them a head start on what SEL is, what they're going to be expecting when they get here to Fenton. And we want to target some specific athletic events and activity events that we can invite some of these eighth graders into our building and show them that they're already part of our family, get them psyched up before they get here. And that could build a stronger bond with those sender districts when their kids and their families are excited about us. And our third goal is to continue the comprehensive approach to meeting students' basic needs to enhance the students' abilities to learn best. So, we're going to maintain and promote the Food for Families program. No student should ever be hungry, we want to make sure they always have their basic needs met, and they can focus on learning. And we are a big advocate for making sure kids have their food. We want to execute and communicate our Equity Action Plan with, I might as well throw some more flowers on Jason Madel for his efforts, and of course, Mike Barago, who's working night and day on that. And then, collaborate with our MTSS team to continue to develop, progress, promotes academic and social-emotional interventions that are available to our parents, so they know that it's there, they're aware of how it works, they can participate and encourage their students.
Thank you, Mr. Cambic. Last but not least, Mr. Martin, Secure in the Future.
Okay, probably the most important strand, so I'll start with that. So, we have three goals, and a couple of them are well underway, and I'll go through the action plans as well. To create a long-range facilities plan that is prioritized to address current and future needs, share that plan with the community, and explore the feasibility of a referendum to secure funding. Well, our facility assessment was really the driver there, and that started in 2019, which led to where we're at today with that whole process. And that involved community participants, public engagement sessions, developing the project, facility, improving project scope and costs, initiating and promoting a referendum. As you know, we're getting closer and closer to meeting that objective later this month. So, that continues, and that will continue to be worked on in Action Two, working with our architects and various Fenton stakeholder groups to develop a schematic design for the future of Fenton facilities. We've already had several meetings with our construction manager, our architect, our administrative team, to look at the plans and see where we want to go, they'll continue to be tweaked. Projects will be refined further, along with, as well as costs. So, we think we have all the right players at the table, but we'll continue to refine that as we go along with that process. Goal Two was to align the budget to support the goals of the 22 through 25 Strategic Plan, really, and the budget is aligned to support the entire Strategic Plan, which is critical to make these things happen. Some of the things we've also done, aligning the budget with sustainability goals, like our solar energy, LED lighting, we talked about that a little bit earlier this evening in our facility meeting, energy-saving programs via consumption reductions, we're part of, and will continue to participate in an energy reduction program whereby we reduce our energy at designated times for savings and rebates back to us. And we'll continue, and as this project gets underway, facility project, many of these sustainability, energy-saving aspects will be addressed with new construction. So, that's very exciting to talk about that. The other thing is exploring the creation of a Fenton Foundation that supports student and teacher initiatives, just another avenue opportunity to provide to our students opportunities, and for our staff as well, to move forward with activities that may not be funded through the school, but could be funded from outside sources. So, we're excited about that happening, to explore that possibility. And then, our Goal Three is continue to monitor and manage district resources to secure financial strength and maintain reasonable reserves, as we mentioned earlier tonight, and we'll continue to do this, monitor federal and state grants, opportunities, particularly those that support school construction and/or facility needs. So, that's an ongoing project as we move forward through this Strategic Plan Action goal and objectives. I also want to mention our team members, Jim Batson, who's standing by and probably can't wait to talk about a little bit, Tom Kobel, James Ontango, and myself. So, we're pleased to be a part of this, and it's truly an exciting opportunity right now. So, Jim, do you want to say a few things?
Is somebody going to speak to the Fenton Foundation by chance?
Thanks, Bruce. I just wanted to mention, as James said earlier, this is on our, the dashboard is actually on our website, it's one of the buttons right towards the top of the website. But as you notice, each goal has a little circle with a percentage in it, these are real numbers at this point in time, we've been updating these, even though it's fairly early in this process. And then, for each action plan, you'll see the little blue bar, and it fills in as we get closer to completing those action plans. We update this on a periodic basis, not every day, but it's not real-time, but on a periodic basis throughout the year, so you can sort of monitor the progress on this, on the action plans and on the goals. So, just wanted to draw that to your attention. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
We should probably give Bruce a round of applause.
There you go.
And thank you, Jim.
No, just as a summary, and I think Patty has a question, is just wanted to thank the administrative team to really putting this together. This is a lot of work, this is our North Star for the next three years, is backed up by the Board, as well as financially with our budget. But I think this is really important because it makes everything fair and transparent for our community to see. And if you really look at this plan, it's holistic. It goes from money to clubs, to books, you know, to social-emotional, to a foundation to make sure that we're secure in the future. Foundation, basically, is, we really want to start that foundation so that we could raise money outside of our regular revenue sources. That will start as soon as the school year starts. But this is tremendous work, a lot of work, and I wanted to thank the team again.
Patty, do you have?
Yeah, to the foundation, is that something like with the alumni, or is that other businesses?
Traditionally, a school foundation is an organization that helps secure funds and revenues, that could be an alumni group, or partnering up with an organization or a company, for example, Quest or Subaru, right? Similar, basically similar to the Bensonville Foundation. We want to find other resources for our school district, for athletics, for academics, for technology, for facilities, so that, you know, our community is asking, the whole journey with the referendum, hey, look, try to find another revenue stream, and this is one way. And, you know, I want to thank the President, King Telpalpong, Kit here, for really saying, hey, look, make that happen, make sure that's in the Strategic Plan, and same thing with the alumni website and database. I think that's critical, that's another avenue. If we could tap to our alumni who are in the workforce, who are, who have companies, who have money. So, yes.
So, basically, it's a nonprofit organization that would apply for other grants and programs that the Board of Education may or may not be happy to receive.
Yeah, so I think probably Bruce could speak to that, but it'd probably be formed as a 501(c)(3) that has a purpose of serving Fenton. Is that about right?
It would be a tax-exempt organization, you know, really, the foundation would be the provider of the grants to individuals and teachers who have you apply for grants and for various projects and so on.
And for, you know, either private sector or other institutions, or private donors can, you know, donate to that cause on a tax-deductible level.
Tax-exempt.
Gives tax advantages to do that. Any other questions?
No question, just a comment. To acknowledge, appreciate the efforts of the education professionals here, I do understand in this age that we're caught up so much in analytics and numbers, but I can say, I know that not all success can be brought down to simply numbers. Some impacts don't show up until our kids leave. So, as much as numbers matter, sometimes they don't tell the whole story. Thank you all.
Good point. Very good point.
So, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
We got a couple more. We got the referendum update with the 100 report. I'll just keep going. Just real quick, the referendum update, there's 13 days left. 13 days, we've been working this basically from the facility audit, which is about 2019, to now with the referendum, 13 days left. As you could see, we're having pictures here in regards to the three mailings that went out to all of our community, all of the residents here. I believe strongly that they have the information, and if they don't, for the folks who are watching, please go to our website at fenton100.org/referendum. It's a rich resource in regards to our referendum, whether it's the different projects, a tax calculator, a description of the projects and timelines, it's all there for you. Secondly, I want to thank the administrative team and the Board who have tirelessly worked this last eight months, whether it's touring the building, whether it's going to different taxing bodies, whether it's having coffee with the principal, or the superintendent, or town hall meetings, or tele-town hall meetings, or take part of the curmaz, or voting drive, and assisting the League of Women Voters. Hundreds of hours went to this effort to improve the lives of our students, our parents, and our staff, because you know what? They deserve better. You know, our community deserved better with a state-of-the-art facilities. Just wanted to thank them. We also did a lot of videos, whether spotlight on Bensonville, where we did a TV show. Right now, with the 13 days remaining, what is the focus? We want to make sure that the intensity is still strong, so we're encouraging everyone to vote, right? Vote early in person. And what you have in there on the screen is, right now, people who are registered voters could go to the Bensonville Police Department and vote, the Addison Township Office can vote, you could go there, Atascapark District, go there and vote, or Elmer City Hall, or the DuPage County Events Center and Fairgrounds, you could go ahead and start voting there. We also want to promote and encourage people to vote by mail, okay? If you have not registered, please go to www.dupagecounty.gov/election/votbymail. And once you receive your requests processed, you will receive a ballot in the mail, you can return it at your convenience before June 28th. And lastly, if you didn't do any of the two, and you would still like to vote and you're a registered voter, come to Fenton on June 28th, where doors are open at 7:00 a.m. to come and vote. So, Fenton is a voting station for this year, it will be in the Field House, so encourage folks to vote in that stadium. So, that's what we're going to focus on as an informational, educational arm of this campaign, and we encourage individuals to do that. Next up is our State Superintendent, came yesterday, Dr. Carmen Ayala to Fenton High School, and it was an amazing visit. I want to first thank Patty, Juliette, and Kit for attending, that was important, that members of the Board of Education was present to say hello to the State Superintendent. It was an excellent event, she visited two classrooms and inspired our students and teachers. Dr. Ayala shared her story as the first Latina and female State Superintendent in the state of Illinois. On our side, the Fenton side, we shared our Fenton story. Our Fenton story was provided by our students, Sarah and Victor, and their journey here at Fenton High School. One of our parents, Ms. Sylvia Acuna, shared her partnership with Fenton High School and Padres Unidos. And our administrators shared our success stories and challenges. It was truly a wonderful event. This morning, I emailed Dr. Ayala, taking advantage of her visit yesterday, to ask her if she would like to be a keynote speaker in our Welcome Back to School staff meeting on August 12th. Wouldn't that be wonderful if the State Superintendent was here again to welcome our staff back into Fenton High School after the summer break? We were going to ask her to share her experiences and to inspire our staff for the next academic school year. I think there are some pictures there, that's our staff in front of, on the screen there, and it was truly a wonderful event. Next slide. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cambic to talk about the Annual Community Report, as he walks to the microphone. We do this every year, we started this about five years ago, just to make sure, part of that community communication and collaboration, to continue to saturate the information to the community and let folks know what's happening at Fenton, whether it's success story or challenges. I think it's critical to have this summary, a comprehensive report at the end of the school year, and we're going to continue this process. We've had very positive response and feedback when we do this annually. Mr. Cambic?
All right. So, this publication has a lot of awesome pictures that I took, but I want to say that the previous slide is one of the very few pictures you're ever going to find that I'm actually in, so I want to give a big hats off to President Tink Palpong for taking that picture. It turned out perfect. I might call you up whenever I need a second camera. But yes, this is our annual report, it goes out to every residential address in the whole district, and it is our highlight reel. It encompasses everything that people need to know and are going to feel good about Fenton High School. So, what you're seeing right here is our cover with our basketball team, they're propped up here on top of the windows, celebrating the fact that they are seniors. And then, this is the digital message board that our partners at the City of Wooddale put up to celebrate our graduating class. And then, when you flip it inside, unlike my nine-minute monologue earlier, there's only so much space that you can fit, so it's a nice mix of highlights, of pictures, text, data. So, there is a full page about a referendum for people to be aware of, because this will be going out before they vote, but it'll also be a great archive. So, when we look back, we'll know, we'll be able to see that passion that we had and the transparency that we had, and the approach that we took. This is going to be a historical document as well as a celebration. And it's a historical document for these kiddos right here, the sixth and seventh speech state champions in four years. And then, on the other side, these are academic achievements with Anna Micor, again, so for this year, also placing very high in an international music competition. So, we're going to celebrate that with the whole community. And it's a mix of stories, little highlight snippets, and then, making sure our students are named and recognized. So, on that rail, you can see all of the students that qualified for states are named, and if they placed in whatever the recognized levels are for second, third, that's listed underneath them. And on the other side, all of our state scholars are listed, we want to celebrate them, we want them to be proud. So, that's going out to all of our community, whether they have kiddos here or not, they're going to know what's up at Fenton High School.
Thank you, Mr. Cambic. That was a lot of work, just want to give him a shout-out on that. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, now we go to consent agenda, I was a little bit premature before. I would say that that was a great idea for the annual report, I think that really speaks to, it's better to over-communicate than it is to under-communicate to the community, so, great job, guys. So, let's go to the consent agenda. Any questions from the Board?
I do. I wanted to ask about the personnel report and the, our new Assistant Principal and DL, so that's a combined position, right?
That's correct. Act as a division leader, as well as an assistant principal.
Okay. Wow, that's a lot on your plate. Congratulations. Okay. So, because we don't have a Fine Arts DL right now, is that correct?
She would take part of that Fine Arts, is that accurate?
That falls under Dr. Grant's division, which is a right department, so it's part of the restructure planning now, but we thought it fit nicely with student life and activities, it fits kind of very.
Extracurricular stuff, I'd say, yeah. And the electives, those are, yeah, okay.
So, then, we'll go ahead and vote on it. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, John.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sylvia. And may have a roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Tink Palpong?
Yes, and motion passed. We go next.
I just want to invite...
I just want to invite Ms. Julia Bray, who came to our board meeting for that. We are very, very excited to have her as our next assistant principal, working with Eric Rana, who's also our assistant principal. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and what are you, what are you thinking right now?
All right. Well, I am alum of Fenton. I graduated in 2002. A community member. I live at Bensonville. My kids go to Tioga. So I'm really excited to be in this role. I love activities. I love fine arts. When I was here, I was in a lot of clubs and activities. I was part of band and choir. And so I have a lot of passion for this role, and I'm really excited for the opportunity.
Okay. We will go next to the discussion items, starting with the final amendment budget. Bruce?
Sure. Just to recap, earlier this evening, we had the hearing, which was part of the process before we adopted the final budget. In this case, it's our amended budget. So we're, there weren't a lot of changes, as we mentioned earlier this evening. Some rather than changes regarding the personal property, like the taxes, and some minor changes on the expense side. Overall improvement in our greater revenues, less revenue, less expenses, lower expenses in our reserves, increase a little bit in terms of our budgeting aspect of revenues over expenses. So we're at the point now where the next stage for the board, they would, unless they have any further questions, we ask them to act on the amended budget, and then we will take the next step and file it accordingly.
So just the bottom line, 0.3% lower expenses, and was it 1.6 mil?
More.
1.6% more revenue. So that's the bottom line. Shall we vote on this? Do you have any questions, everybody? No? Okay. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accept this certificate stating that the amended budget for 2021, 2022 was prepared and available for public inspection 30 days prior to the hearing and the publisher's affidavit of legal notice of public hearing and incorporate same into the official minutes of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, the motion passed. Next, we'll go to adoption of amended budget resolution. Again, Bruce?
I think we, I don't actually need anything. Are you learning this?
My apologies, that was Jose, yeah.
Yeah, so we had a discussion earlier about the fact that it's a three-year renewal. This is the current situation with the county level school. So really, it's just to continue this program for any unexpected situations that we have in the next three years.
Okay. Any questions on the e-learning? Who went over?
Mary?
There's two other parts to the budget that we need to process first.
Let's do this first, and we'll go back.
Okay.
Okay. We may have a motion that the Board of Education gives authority to the Fenton administration to proceed with the e-learning renewal for the 2022, 2023 school year, which would extend until the end of 2022 to 2025, school year for a period of three years total. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Leo. Second, please.
Second.
Sylvia, roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, and motion passed.
Okay, there we go.
Jim, could you go back to all of the discussion action items, just real quick, so we're doing it by hand?
Okay.
So we've done the final. Next one is the budget summary report.
The budget summary report.
So there's three, the acceptance of the public hearing documents, adoption of budget resolution.
Yeah, there's the hearing documents, adoption of budget resolution, and then also the amended budget with Bruce. Both of them with yours.
Yep.
Okay, so let's go to the adoption of amended budget resolution then.
The resolution is in your packet, and it just formalizes the whole process in terms of adopting the amended budget. And we'll ask the board to, I don't think we need to read the whole thing, but the, we do ask the board, once they approve the budget, we can fill this in accordingly with the a's and the s. I think if we can go back to the acceptance of the public hearing documents and act on that.
We, we did.
Okay, and then the adoption of the budget resolution, which we just did now.
Yes, and then we'll vote on this.
Adoption of the amended budget.
Right. Yep. So if we have no further questions on, so may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the 2021, 2022 amended budget resolution as presented?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, John. And may I have a roll call?
Rego?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, and motion passed. Then next would be Bruce with adoption of the 2021, 2022 amended budget.
That the Board of Education approved the 2021, 22 budget as presented, amended budget as presented.
And we went through this with the finance committee earlier too, so.
So moved.
Wait, wait. So may I have a motion for the Board of Education to adopt the 2021, 2022 amended budget as presented? So.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Rego?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, and motion passed. Way to go. Bruce? So next, then we go to the district, the 100 consolidated district plan for fiscal year 2023, and that's Michelle.
Thanks. So each year, we apply for a number of federal grants, and I bring forward the consolidated grant district plan for your approval. This allows us to apply and participate in grant fund programs such as Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, IDEA, ESER, and ARP ESER III. So what it really is, is a grant management system through the State Board of Ed that brings together these multiple funding sources and asks us to explain what our essentially strategic plan is to support our students and develop programs in an equitable manner. It allows ISB to view our grants holistically and see how they all fit together. And then it asks us to answer a set of questions. So I provided you a summary, a pretty detailed summary. There is more in there. I wasn't going to give you all 100 pages, and I'll try not to bore you with all of the details, but I'd like to give you an overview, a pretty thorough overview of what's happening with the grant. So as I mentioned, these are the federal programs that we apply for, and once we get approved for our consolidated plan, we can go ahead and start applying for these grants. They ask for summary of responses in all of these areas that you see on the board, equitable access, what our district goals are, what our stakeholder input was, what our needs assessment was like, what our student achievements like, what our college and career plans are, what our professional development is. And then really specific, specifics about our Title I, our safe learning environment, IDEA, which is special education, our foster care. And then at the very end, it asks the board to give assurances that this is all ethical and put together in a meaningful way. So the State Board of Education has three goals in each area that we need to identify. Pretty much all of our goals meet all of their goals. Ones in student learning, ones in the learning conditions that we provide here at Fenton, and ones in our educator quality. We describe for them how we will ensure equitable access. We do that through, obviously, our equity audit and equity action planning. We're a district that does that, so we're in, we're in a good place to answer that question. And we have stakeholder surveys and other data analysis tools, and we provide plenty of professional development. Our stakeholders are our parents, our parent groups, our students, our district equity leadership team, our strategic plan 2.0 participants, our support staff, our certified staff, our administration. Our needs assessment included our district equity audit, our strategic plan process, our access testing, IEP survey, stakeholder feedback, focus groups, annual one parent meeting. So there's a lot that goes into how we really comprehend what our needs are. And we try and do that from multiple sources and with multiple stakeholders. In the area of student achievement, we focused in this plan that we have a well-rounded instructional program. We have systems to identify students at risk. We have educational assistance for students in need. We have strategies to improve our academic and language programs. We have effective, experienced, high-quality teachers. We have an effective library program, and we serve gifted and talented students. In our college and career area, we focus on effective transition for students from middle school to Fenton, and also Fenton to post-secondary placement. We're working on our career pathways committee goals, and we're seeking experiential learning opportunities to promote skills important to in-demand occupations and industries. Our professional development is broad and vast, and we focus on many areas. These are just a few of them. Professional learning communities, personalized blended, MTSS, diversity, equity, inclusion, college and career readiness, behavior planning, transition practices. I mean, you name it, we're touching it. So those are all included into the grant. For our safe learning environment, we focus on these four areas of social-emotional learning goals, reducing incidences of bullying and harassment, reducing overuse of removal, like in schools or out-of-school suspensions and expulsions, and then how we service our homeless youth. We talk in the plan about how we will specifically use Title I funds. We specifically use Title I funds for MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, our Chromebooks, calculators for our students, professional development, school-wide assessment programs, summer school salaries, early credit, or early college credit programs, experiential learning within college and career settings, student voice, types of activities, tech-enriched learning environments, extracurricular activities, and parent involvement. So we touch a whole, we touch many areas of that strategic plan through our Title I funding. For IDEA, which is our specialized grant, we're focusing on social-emotional learning, multi-tiered systems of support, transition practices, behavior planning, best practices for inclusive programming. Our foster care transportation, they want to know that we have a vetting system and a very thorough process for how we determine how our foster care students are transported to and from school. So we give them a whole bunch of information about that.
Is that if they leave the district?
Yeah, right. And if they're outside of our district boundaries, are we going to continue servicing them here at Fenton? How will we get them there and back? If that's the case, there's a lot of factors that go into making those determinations about what's best for the students.
MT, has he said that was part of your specialist, part of the special ed?
So multi-tiered systems of support is a school-wide program that provides supports to any student, whether they have an IEP or not. Sometimes there are students involved in it with IEPs or ESL, and sometimes there are students who don't have IEPs or ESL. It's really designed for the entire school. You have one, there's actually usually three tiers. And your first tier, your tier one, is what happens school-wide. Everybody gets access to these kinds of supports. And then your tier two is like, well, these students aren't really responding to that. We need to get some small groups for them going. We need some additional supports for them. And then your tier three is your most neediest students who need some more one-to-one types of support and things like that.
And Carrie, the supports are academic or behavioral?
Yeah.
I, it just threw me when it said it was part of the.
Oh, yeah. They did say it was part of the IDEA specific.
That's not what I gathered from everybody's presentation.
So we work with our co-op, NedSec, and they support us in different ways. And we actually work with them on how we use the funds for the IDEA grant. So they support our school also with either professional development or types of ideas for our multi-systems of support, especially at that tier level, at that tier three level, where we get into more significant needs.
I followed the big umbrella that it covers, but when it's.
Yeah.
It just threw me.
No, I completely understand that. It's not really supposed to be a special ed thing. It's supposed to be a school-wide thing, but they do help support it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And then the last thing that you'll see in the summary are the board approval certification and assurances that are in the final pages of the summary that talk about, you know, the rules and your assurances that we're managing this in an ethical manner. So that summary provides everything, and if you'd like to make a motion to.
Yeah, we'll go in a second. I've got a question. So on average, how much, how many, how much funds total do we secure per year? Does that deviate based on each year?
It does. It's been pretty standard, you know, for the past three or four years that I've been doing that. So we saw somewhat of a decrease this year with our anticipated allocation, especially in Title I and Title II. I'm not sure why we were trying to dig into and really find the ISB formula. They use a little bit of census data to determine our allocation, as well as our free and reduced lunch numbers that we provide them each year. So we saw last year coming in from Title I about $240,000 in our initial allocation, and this year it's at 159. So it's almost $90,000 less already. Now, that's a preliminary allocation, but they do come back to us after they run all their numbers, and we tend to get a little bit more, as well as any carryover we may have not used from the previous year. So we'll see that increase, but not to the degree that we've had over the last couple of years. Same thing with Title II. This year, we include ESER II and ESER III in this consolidated plan, which is new. So we have a significant amount of overage that we're used to from these federal funds. For Title III, we get about $30,000. And Title IV, we usually get about 10,000 to 20,000, but we roll that, we call it blending. We blend that into our Title I, because Title I allows for the same rules that Title IV does. It just gives us more flexibility. So I know that doesn't completely give you that, that grand total you're looking for, but those are the.
It's a good general idea. Do ESER money include dishwashers?
You know, well, there's a, well, there's a way, I suppose, but, but, I don't know.
I think it's interesting to know, like, how much we do get from each fund, because like this year, you're saying like Title I is about 90,000 less, because then if we, how can we count on those funds? And if we can't, you know, if we are cut here, how can we, you know, support from a different area?
Yeah, definitely. How do we braid and blend these funding sources together to really meet the needs?
Because ESERS are going away, so we can't really count on that.
Right.
Yeah, we'll break that down when we present the budget in July, with the federal funding sources.
You know, reading through, and I read through all.
Thank you. I know it was 22 pages.
I really liked the breakdown, just the outlines that you just gave us. Very thorough in how you incorporated the, you know, our strategic plan and all the different community meetings and everything into it and assessing the needs of the community. It seems like there's a lot geared towards behavioral stuff versus academic. Am I, like, am I, like, reading that wrong?
Um, I would, I would say when, when you actually get down to the nitty-gritty in each grant, and you see what's allocated towards instructional services and instructional programming, it's definitely balanced. Maybe the plan doesn't read like that, and I'm not sure why I haven't, I can go back and pick up on that. But when we actually start allocating or sourcing the money, you know, a lot of it goes into the instructional digital tools that we use in the classroom, you know, for math and literacy, and into AP programming, like equal opportunity schools is something we've historically used title funds for. So there's, there's, there's definitely. So there's definitely a lot that goes into the academic when we actually write the title, when we write the title.
It was a lot about DEI versus.
Yeah, you know, they.
You've got the Chromebooks and the calculators in there, but then there's a lot about.
Yes. Yeah, the state wants to see us talk about how we address equity. It's an equity grant in their minds now. I mean, that's why they did this to historically, holistically, to provide improved technical assistance grounded in equity. So we try to focus on that to ensure that they understand that it's not something that we're just putting to the side. That's front and center for us.
If you want the money.
Yeah, and this is IDEA act-led programs too, right?
I'm sorry?
This is part of the IDEA, IDEA-driven programs as well.
Yes, yeah. Oh, and those come in at about $300,000. So that's a larger fund probably than Title I even. Yeah, sorry, forgot that one.
Read to be, to, but I didn't put it together, so I, I get it. But it's, that's a lot to get to the grant portion of it.
I know.
But if you're already doing that.
It's a lot of writing too.
Right? If you're already doing those things and you're, you know, honestly doing the things that they're, you're saying you're using the money for, then it's an easy ride.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting those fingers moving, which I typed fast.
When I see spin.
I've been trying to, is this the first year that you've seen such a decrease in the Title I funding?
We've been seeing slight decreases over time, but this is the most significant one we've seen in the initial allocation. We're hoping that when they get to the final allocation, because this is like the estimated one, that we see a bigger jump than we've seen previously. But time will tell and see, you know, see what we get here. I mean, we're responding to it. Bruce and I and Jim, especially because there's a lot of technology embedded in Title I, how to manage it all.
Okay, great discussion.
Yeah, I'm a little slow, give my thoughts out. You made it speak pretty quickly.
We've got a few more items, so.
He's still a little slow.
My apologies.
Was there a difference in how much was awarded? I would say prior to our strategic plan, getting into place and being able to really address this. Was there a shift in the amount because this was put together, the consolidated district plan?
I wouldn't necessarily say the amount hinges on the plan in any way. It hinges on our census data and our free and reduced lunch numbers. So would I write in here? They just want to make sure we're focusing on equity in a very systematic way, but the allocation's from a whole different office.
And as a board, we need to remember these are grants. These could go away. I hope they never do.
Well, SRR will.
But we know SRR will, but, you know, that grant funding is going to change from year to year. So no matter how well we write it, sometimes it doesn't matter. At least that's what I've learned in my past life.
Yeah.
So even when you do everything right, it sometimes doesn't work the way you wish it would. And we need to keep that in mind, and that falls to Bruce and the board and the budget and having that reserve, because you never know when grant money dries up.
Great comments. Anything else? We'll move on. Okay. So may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the Illinois State Board of Education fiscal year 2023, consolidated district plan Fenton, Community High School District Number 100 as presented?
So moved. Second.
Okay. And may I have a roll call?
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Ting Pong?
Yes, and motion passed. Next, we go to Bruce again with meal prices for school year 2022, 2023.
If we could, could we flip-flop those two and do the contract renewal first and then the prices? It's just the reverse order if we could.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely. So let's go to the food service contract renewal, 2022, 2023.
Thank you. So this is for 2223. We bring this to the board every year. It's a five-year agreement contract with them, with Arbor. It happens to be our food service management company. But I kind of look at it as five one-year agreements, because we bring it to the board every year, and we could, we can obviously end it sooner if we so chose to. But as you know, the past school year, we were in a little bit different circumstances. We were participating, what they coined as the summer food service program, which is a program that they actually operate based on eligibility of districts and so on. But that was the program we operated under the federal guidelines, was what was recommended to use that program. And then provided free meals to all students, so breakfast and lunch. So that's, there was no application process. Everyone, whether you were paid, free, reduced, everyone received a free meal throughout the school year. So that program is ending at the end of this month. And we'll, we'll actually get back into the NSLP, the National School Lunch Program. And the summer program that we participate in that we'll revert back to and that we're already in now is the Seamless Summer Program, which is meals during summer school hours and one meal we serve each day for summer school students, athletes, and so on, whoever's students that are in the building. So that is already underway, that program. The other thing is each year, the contract can be adjusted, is adjusted, and it's tied to the CPI. Our contract is in particular, or CPI, whichever is less. The December 2021 CPI, as you probably all remember, was 7%. Arbor is requesting a 6% increase to assist with the increases in operating costs such as food and packaging and labor costs. They have provided their economic outlook. I included that in your packet. And the Illinois State Board of Education is allowing that flexibility to deviate from your contract language for this year, for next year only 2223. And I included that information and kind of repeated what they had said. It's an option for next year due to the current supply chain market and possible rise in industry costs. So we already know those industry costs are rising at a greater proportion than they have otherwise. We calculate, a rough calculation is about $12,000 more if the board were to approve that difference in price from 3% to 6%. And we would, it would just be a one-year increase only. This is an important piece, though. Future adjustments will be calculated based on the 2021, 22 rate plus any increase. So it won't be built off of this 6% number, but it'll revert back to the, you wrote it currently is now, which I think is, that kind of reinforced, it was an important piece for me to consider. So we're asking the board to actually exceed the contract of 3% to 6% for this one year because of the circumstances and the price, cost of goods and food and paper goods and all those types of things. So that's kind of where we're at right now. The state is allowing it, this flexibility allowance option. They're not requiring it, but they are allowing you to do it. There is some additional, we would obviously need to inform the Illinois State Board about our plan for doing that. But we are recommending that the board accept the 6% increase for next year for the meal prices.
And so what happens next year, the CPI happens to stay up?
Well, I think we've got to take it one year at a time. The board may say, look, we, you know, if it does go, it's another high CPI. The board may just, and we may recommend that, you know, we've given you, we exceeded it one year, but we're not going to, you know, go as high as what it could be if it were to turn out that way.
Does this include labor costs too?
Yeah, it's an all-in price, yeah, turnkey price.
12,000 per year for this year?
That's a projection for next year, yeah.
So earlier this year, we voted to, wasn't this Arbor Food Service where we voted to increase the staff pay? Which was justified? You guys have any questions on that? Some good questions to dig into this little bit?
So it's like, so they're covering their labor costs, so it's 6% increase.
Labor, food, supply chain expenses, yeah.
The bigger driver, I think, is the, yeah, the food costs and the supply costs.
And delivery, so supply chain, distribution, a lot of the gas to distribute, we get that.
They're just an IT task, but yeah.
Yeah. So what is the alternative if we don't vote this?
Well, they, they would just accept it, and they would, well, they wouldn't, they've told me they wouldn't pull out, but they, you know, it would be a lean year for them for sure. They'd probably lose money.
Hmm, okay.
So if we, if we didn't, would the food decrease, would the food stay the same if we, or would they be decreasing their?
Well, they're required to serve, the portions are dictated by the, you know, the feds, the federal government with the program. So they couldn't, you know, cut the protein down.
They're not going to decrease.
The meals would have to be the same, would continue to be the same.
And the quality has to stay the same regardless, right?
Yes.
We addressed this before, or is this two separate increases?
Yeah, this is just for the contractual adjustment, and then the next one would be for a lunch price adjustment for the students.
Last time we addressed specifically the salary of the employee serving the food. This is the overall project, contract, everything.
Yes.
I mean, board, is how I see it. They're trying to cover their costs in regards to high food prices as well as inflation and so forth. So that's the key one.
Right.
So do we, do you assist in regards to make that happen? Or do we say, you know what, it's like everyone else, you know, we have to take it? So that's, I think that's the bottom line.
Does anybody know, is there a lot of food waste? Do kids throw their food out?
Well, we try to collect, you know, if there's a whole piece of fruit that they don't want, we've saved those for, you know, snacks for, you know, as long as it's, you know, there's nothing wrong with it. It's not, you know, half eaten apple or something. We won't do that. But yeah, we've, we've collected that. Milk, oftentimes they won't drink the milk, or fruit is probably, those are probably the two biggest things, I would say.
Like the kids, are the kids throwing away? Like, how is the food? What do the kids say? Have they been surveyed lately?
We did, um, two years ago, probably. Everything kind of was thrown off a little bit last year, but we've done surveys. Yeah, we have a food service committee.
Okay. So Arbor is doing still a good.
Much better than what we had. Hands down.
This is my daughter.
She does?
Yeah.
One of the things with them is they have been responsive. Like when we meet with them, we have concerns all the way from James on down. It's, they've at least listened, and they've tried to make adjustments as needed, I think, throughout.
Definitely operation-wise, human resource, they're there 100%. As you guys remember, I report over and over during the pandemic, they're here serving at the height of the pandemic, at the low of the pandemic, consistently serving. Ladies are outstanding. As a company, that is a business decision. As individuals, we will stand up with them anytime. They're good folks.
You know, just to echo what Sam was saying, you know, they're a smaller company, and upper management is very accessible. So I think that's helpful for us if we've had to reach out to them. And sometimes they just show up and come out and pay a visit unannounced, and we, most of the time, we're available. And, you know, we talk it through and see how things are going and share any concerns.
Well, and I know this is.
They're not just trying to get an increased food. The price of food is going up, we all know that, so.
Yeah, food and gas, so delivery and supplies, so, okay. So are we ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
So may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the contract renewal extension commencing July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, with Arbor Management Incorporated for the provision of food service management. District 100 will utilize a flexibility allowance option as allowed by the Illinois State Board of Education for the 2022, 2023 school year. May I have a motion?
Can I just ask one other question? It's just for this year, right? We're going to revisit it?
Yes.
If needed?
Yep, yes.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off of that, so they're going to base the CPI off the previous year, so not, not the seven. Is that correct?
The 6%, yeah.
Okay.
Right, that's correct.
What does this last statement say? All the wage, tax, insurance factors combined will potentially result in a 7.2 to a 9.8% wage and tax category increase. It's on, I'll page this on.
Is that on the economic outlook?
It's six of 10. Six of 10, yeah, on the economic outlook. Right before David, before his, his name. It's bolded, under health insurance, work rooms, comp. All wage, tax, and insurance factors combined. Do you see where I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think what they're saying is that's the projection of what the actual increase will be. So even with a 6% increase, their costs will probably be higher than that.
That's not something we're doing.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, John, there's a motion, and Sylvia, second. And may I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Regal?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Ting Pong?
Yes, motion passed. Going back to meal prices for school year 2022, 2023, Bruce?
Okay, thank you. Now that we've approved the contract, we could talk about lunch prices for next year. Arbor, they've given us a proposed price adjustment for school meals and à la carte items effective for next school year. The suggested à la carte prices are included there. They don't, they didn't adjust everything, but they did make some adjustments. They aren't changed every year or adjusted every year. So, and there really wasn't a lot of à la carte sales at all last year, quite honestly. So the part of it is increasing, the price has to be competitive with the, this paid lunch equity provision that's part of the program. And that only applies to the paid meals. So we do have discretion over the à la carte pricing. But the purpose of the late paid lunch equity is to ensure that schools are charging equitable price, equitable price for the paying student for lunch and breakfast coupled with federal reimbursement. So they don't want you subsidizing the paid meal with local dollars or with federal dollars, I should say. So they want it, so the suggested increase is 10 cents just for the lunches. They're not suggesting an increase for the breakfast, but they're suggesting a 10-cent increase. I'm inclined to go along with that. This would only impact our paid students, so it would go from $3 to $3.10. And then, as I said, breakfast prices would remain unchanged for next school year. So we did have an increase in 2021, was the last paid increase. You know, my concern, I guess, is if we didn't increase it now, would there have to be a bigger increase later on? Because we postponed it to maintain the, you know, PLE requirement. So I guess I'd rather have a smaller increase now than a, you know, 25 or 30 cent increase a year or so, two years from now.
Most of this is by account, so it just gets drafted from the card, right? So.
Yes, it's all, yes.
Yeah, so if you're thinking they have to carry 10 cents, they don't.
They used to have to.
You used to have to. It just gets drafted from the card, so.
Well, in this every couple of years.
Any questions?
I wish my lunch price would only go up a dime. I mean, the biggest ones are quarter, looking at everything going on in the world today. I think these are all very fair requests.
All right, so may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the meal price increase beginning in the 2022, 2023 school year as follows? beginning in the 2022-2023 school year as follows. Paid lunch increased by 10 cents for a cost of, a total cost for paid students of $3.10. À la carte prices shall be adjusted as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, he was first.
I think I think Carrie wants.
He was first, he did.
There you go. So so it was Patty.
And I got two dimes, so it's on the table, whoever's.
Uh, and roll call, please?
Rego?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Ting Pong Pong?
Yes, the motion passed. John's enthusiastic yes was amazing. So we go to the textbooks now, 2022-2023 new textbook purchases, and that would be Michelle.
Yep. Okay, each year, um, courses identify the need for new or updated textbooks. Those proposals go through a vetting process with our teachers, division leaders, with me and our instructional leadership team. Um, we want to make sure that it aligns to our course competencies as well as our district curriculum and instruction goals. This year, we have a, um, an an estimated amount of $47,988.47, which is actually less than last year. Um, in a couple of cases, you're seeing textbooks that we actually approved last year. What we've, um, the strategy that Bruce and I have talked about is trying to, with these larger purchases, extend the purchases over multiple years in all cases possible. So we have a couple of those items on our list this year. Um, one of them was the U.S. History Book that was approved last year. We paid 17,000 of it last year. We're paying 17,000 of it this year. So we'll be, um, all in all, um, done with that expense. In science, our AP Biology book is rather old, so we're getting a nice, um, new, fresh AP textbook that is approved and recommended by the College Board. And academic literacy in our English department, they want to try out a new novel called Unbroken. It is about a story related to World War II and military. It's a bestseller and and it's in a, it's actually in a young adult literature version. And then, um, in our business department, we have a new class, International Business and Marketing. So they've identified a textbook that's actually used at the, um, college level. I think COD uses it as well as Elgin Community College. So if we ever look to do credit in that area, we already have the text that's aligned. So those are, and then we have Math 1, 2, and 3. We had allocated last year that we would start paying, um, the a big amount because we have three school years worth of students using the resource. But we were able to talk with them about extending our pilot one more year. This year did not serve any students well in trying to get into a brand new curriculum. There was a lot of learning gaps that we had to account for, and we really didn't get to see the full benefit of the new curriculum. So we asked them if we could please extend that one more year before we make this final decision and such a large investment. So that's why we only are investing $4,500 this year. If we do finalize that purchase in 2024 and '25, it'll be $55,000 each year. So, um, I think I covered, oh, AP Macroeconomics and Social Studies is getting an updated AP textbook as well. Any questions?
Is that $55,000 for the online course as well as the books, or?
Um, hmm, hold on. Um, there are books that we actually purchased, like the workbooks and the online version. And you'll see in many cases, and thank you for asking that question, um, in many cases, we're getting the hardcover and the ebook. Um, you might say, why both? Like, that's, why would we expend that much money? The publishers have kind of forced our hand in this. In most cases, it's just, it's almost the same exact price to get, um, the ebook and the hardcover. If you just want the ebook, they raise the price through the roof because they still want to sell their papers. And we do end up having a a number of students who say, I prefer the paper, I need the paper. And and all in all, we do end up going back to these publishers and purchasing the paper ones. So sometimes we either get a class set, but in these cases, because the price was so close, we said, let's just get them all the paper and the ebook.
It's probably helpful to have.
Yeah, thanks for asking that question. Yeah, that for math and for all of the AP classes.
And it fits in with our Chromebook, uh, program. Any questions on that? May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the new next, uh, new textbook purchase for the 2022-23, 2023 school year as presented?
So moved.
Carrie, yes?
Second.
And Sylvia?
Thank you.
Roll call, please?
Rego?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Ting Pong Pong?
Yes, the motion passed. Uh, we've got three more items to vote on. Next is the 2022-2023 consumable, uh, materials and textbook replenishment proposal. Michelle?
Thanks. Um, so each year, we, um, look at each of our courses, and some of our courses use workbooks or consumable materials, and we do our inventory of what we've gotten back from our, um, our students and if any are lost or damaged, we replace textbooks as well. So this year, um, I I give you the detailed report. There's really no rhyme or reason or rationale. It's just like, we don't have this, so we have to purchase it. Or we have a higher enrollment in this course than we typically had, so we have to, um, purchase 10, 15 more books. For our workbook replenishment, um, it will, it's at a cost of, estimated cost of $13,500. Our consumable supplies, like binders, um, in some of the areas, that's $1,810.22. And our textbook replenishment for lost or damaged, or in this case, we have an extension to one of our ebooks. It's six years old. The the, it's up. We're gonna extend it for one more year before we make any decisions if we want a new one. So that is actually in the replenishment for 8,000 or as part of the textbook replenishment. In total, the textbook replenishment is $8,084.34 for a total of $23,415.61. It's just a little higher than last year. The new textbooks were a little lower, so we're about status quo on everything.
So new textbooks, higher, no, lower?
Lower. Replenishment just a bit higher. Overall, I think we're lower, um, this fiscal year than last year.
Which is good.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah.
With inflation and cost. All right, so no questions, and may I have a motion, uh, that the Board of Education approved the 2022-2023 consumable materials and textbook replenishment proposal as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, John.
Second.
And Leo? May I have a roll call?
Rego?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Ting Pong Pong?
Yes, and the motion passed with the replenishment. Fitness equipment for school year 2022 and 2023, Bruce?
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, the tentative amended budget did include, uh, this purchase. We did collapse a few buses, uh, budgets that did not, uh, materialize. So we utilized that funding, uh, and we did, uh, add an additional $25,000 to fund half of the equipment in this fiscal year. And then the balance that we would propose paying for out of the next school year budget. The the equipment is quite old. We've kind of identified some of the factors there that are that are involved with the equipment. It was used to begin with, um, but we have had it maintained on a regular basis, but some of it's become obsolete or just really not not repairable. No, no more parts, no longer manufactured, et cetera, with with that kind of, uh, activity. So it's it's 15 plus years old. Uh, 12 pieces were purchased in 2016, 14 were in 2013. We have some bikes that are still usable, but most of them are kind of, uh, in bad shape. What we can still use, we will redeploy them, uh, in the wrestling gym, uh, for PE and practices. We do, uh, the purchase would be made through Sourcewell, which is a a bid, uh, state bid approved contract. And it would include the hallway for the equipment as well. We think that would be probably the best way to do it. We'll, we could explore, and we'll explore some other options, Patty, as you had mentioned earlier about how we might want to dispose of it. But, uh, the the $1,500 we thought was reasonable, uh, for, um, removal of the unusable equipment. So we're, uh, asking the Board for approval, uh, for this equipment, um, in that $88,125.40 number. And that will include, uh, delivery and installation as well.
I think that this would be a good source or a good use of SIR funds. And and in all seriousness, I mean, kids sat around for a year. They were inactive if we could help to improve their health through, you know, the exercise equipment. I think it'd be a good use.
Just my feedback, real quick, SIR 1 was really in regards to PPE, staff development technology. SIR 2 was more geared towards, again, development, technology, um, and learning loss. And lastly, the big one is the learning loss, um, was the main gist of SIR 3. But Bruce, do you see a a possibility of using physical fitness?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly, uh, contact the grant coordinator and ask her if it's, uh, Michelle's been pretty, uh, creative with some of her language, so, uh, we can, uh, maybe collaborate on that.
But seriously, if we want to help improve our students' health and, you know, if they were inactive for a year, it's gonna take them, you know, if we can't help it still, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I I have no problem making the request.
So how would that look as a vote tonight?
It's a, let me just, it's a request, but it might be a stretch as well, so.
Yeah.
I think it's a stretch.
We're putting here is that we want to make sure that our kids, when they walk in in August, that they have fitness equipment ready to go, and it should not be grant dependent because we do have classes in there, um, starting from day one, and we want to make sure they have those, uh, those equipments there.
And we have to also consider what's already written into the grant and what goes if this goes into the grant. So if it all makes sense together.
Okay.
But, yeah, there's always a way to connect things, but.
Yeah, this is a vote to approve the the budget, but not where the sources are. Right?
So approve the purchase.
The purchase, no, it it's split into two years.
Right.
At 50/50, and then could you, could you answer, um, what percentage of the equipment are we replacing approximately?
Probably 90.
90%, so most of it.
90% plus, yeah.
So the kids will get new gym equipment, essentially.
Yeah.
Okay, and the 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 students who use it are, it's accessible to all students?
Yes.
And but primarily athletes?
Yes.
No, it's it's for everyone before and after school. It's for classes. It's also used by our staff, um, for their, uh, well-being as well. Just a reminder, the the equipment we have here was from Bally's in 1985.
Oh, my goodness.
This has to be replaced. Thank you.
It's like Miami Vice time.
Miami Vice.
You know, and, uh, okay.
Did you have a, is it still, is it still a leg warmer requirement?
So, uh, then may I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the fitness center equipment from Total Fitness through the Sourcewell Cooperative, uh, purchasing contract. That's listed for a total cost of $88,125.40. The equipment should be paid for over two fiscal years in fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Sylvia?
Second.
And Leo, thank you. Roll call, please?
Rego?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Ting Pong Pong?
Yes, motion passed. One last thing to vote on, uh, DAOES intergovernmental agreement. James?
Sure, I'll be quick on this one. Last, um, board meeting, uh, we discussed this as a discussion only. This is about TCD, fancy word for DAOS, and it's about an intergovernment agreement with the 14th High School District. Next slide, please, please. Jim? There, in in the revised IGA, in the revised agreement, there are two points there that needs to be changed, and it's bolded on your screen. It's a language cleanup and dissolution language. It basically, what it means is what happens if TCD is dissolved. Next slide, please. Most important thing to note on this slide, there is no talk for TCD to go away. But we need the language in the contract, okay? So just in case, there are two points I want you guys to pay attention to, because we're gonna ask for a vote after this presentation. TCD or DAOS came to being in 1972, 50 years ago. There were only eight school at that time. They decided to have a building appraisal in 1987 to see how much the property cost, and it was 19 mil, approximately $20 million. They did it again in 2021. It's worth, now worth $31 million. So the increase from '87 to 2021 is approximately $11 million. Those two dates are critical, and because this is what happened. Next slide, please. Back in 1972, there were only eight school districts, okay, and Fenton was one of them. To give birth to TCD, they needed some seed money to build the facilities. Fenton gave about approximately $300,000. I'll give another, Glenbard '87 gave the most of over a million dollars. Next slide, please. So in 1987, from 1972, those eight schools decided, okay, how much would they need in IGA? How much does the school cost? Approximately $20 million. Approximately 20 years later, they did another appraisal. It's worth about $31 million. Once again, the increase is $11 million. Next slide. Currently, there are 14 schools. That's where the hiccup is. So the old timers, including Fenton, the original, AID, is, hey, look, it's worth $31 million. How are we gonna divide this if we do dissolve TCD? Real quick, the the proceeds there, this number is. 10-year percentage attendance rate that we send over there. So 4% of the students at TCD is from Fenton High School. Next slide, please. Oop, go back. Was that the next slide? Go. That's it, that's it, okay. So. Go back one more time, Jim. One more. So, let's look at this number. So in 19, um, is it 80, 1987, okay? The eight remaining school will have, since the 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 building is worth $19 million, okay, in 1987, it will be divided by the eight school district that originally started it. Fenton will receive $1.7 million if it was dissolved automatically. Now, what do you do from next slide, what do you do from 1987 to 1920, uh, 2021, when there was $11 million gained, that will be split up by the 14th school district? So first divvy up that that $19 million, that 19.9 million will be divided by the eight school district. Then the $31 million will be divided by the current 14. So in total, next slide, please. Fenton High School will receive approximately $2 million from the seed money of $300,000, divided in that way. It wasn't fair, um, uh, according to the 14th school district. There was an argument that, you know what, we started this school 50 years ago, it should be divided in with the eight school districts. Because the 14th school district has been around over, uh, 20, 30 years. So they said, no, there's gotta be some equity involved. The first appraisal should be, should involve the eight school district. Now with the new, um, appraisal, it should involve all 14. So the proposal here is, what's on the table is to prove the IGA as 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 stated or as described here. Does that make sense? I know this is the second time we went through that. That's why I went a little, uh, quickly on it.
You know, um, the additional schools of the original eight, what kind of contributions are they making other than just paying for their students to attend?
Oh, absolutely. The roof, the roof needed some changing, facilities needed to bath, uh, added, for example, bathrooms. School buses needed to be bought, things like that, kind of like what we're going on. They're, they are, uh, integrally responsible for all of that, but everybody, everybody's putting in.
The money's, is that taxable? It's not taxable, right, since we're at school?
That I don't know. Bruce, do you know if the money's taxable?
Is that gain taxable?
Uh, it shouldn't be, no.
Yeah, it shouldn't be, right. Yeah, it shouldn't be, right.
It's all for the, you know, tax exempt.
Yeah. So once again, what's on the table is, we want an I G A reflecting this language because it is not clear in the current I G A, what happens if T C, T C D is dissolved tomorrow, or a month from now, or ten years from now? This would give clarity. There should be some credence to the eight school district that put down the seed money, and that's, that's where the argument was.
And just to clarify, this is a vote to approve pursuing dissipating it?
No, this is a vote to approve the, the current proposed I G A, which makes it clear what happens if T C D is dissolved.
Yes.
If, if, there's no talk of it being dissolved.
What happens if all fourteen schools don't agree?
We need a total of nine votes from the eight school district. The, the board members, which I am a board member of, which is our, all the superintendents, then we come back to our school district and ask our board, hey, look, we would like you to support this. If, if we do not have nine votes from the school districts, then we would have to start over.
We're going to need one more after the, because the first eight are going to agree.
Yeah, it's pretty much unanimous. It, it makes sense. No one loses money. The big, the folks with the most to lose are the eight original, and we wanted to make sure that was equitable. We also don't want to disfranchise the remaining six new school district because it's expensive to run T C D, so.
So how does this, so looking at ahead, you know, let's say it doesn't happen this year, next year, who knows, but that's to be left, to be said later, but as, as the value adjusts, right, do we come back then and vote again?
The I G A, I believe is good for approximately five to ten years. I got to double check, but it's good for multiple years here.
Okay.
So that those percentages will probably stay the same unless enrollment changes?
Well, we, we know we're committed to T C D and career pathways. We have seen an increase, Michelle. We used to have fifty to sixty students. We're closer to eighty or eighty-five next year. We would like to increase enrollment because we value what's offered there at T C D, and that's what the community is asking for, more career pathways, more vocational classes. I see, I see our numbers going up.
So would those change those percentages?
I believe so. As we increase our, our enrollment, those numbers will change. But in, in general, the way to look at this too is, that was a great investment.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Great, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the D A O E S intergovernmental agreement, that the D A O E S has approved as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Carrie. Roll call, please.
Regal?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Ridzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Ting Pong?
Yes. Okay, that concludes the, the voting, the action consent items. Let's go to committee reports, starting with the Benson Bill Foundation.
We have nothing new to report.
Okay, and then we go to the E D I committee. We have nothing new here to report. The finance committee, we had a meeting earlier. Did you guys want to recap real quick, or are we good?
No, I believe it was covered well in the meeting. Everybody get out and vote.
I A S B delegates? Oh, that's me. I have nothing to report. Been a long night. Lend?
There's no report on my part, but the next one is NetSec. Next slide. This is real quickly, we had a meeting on Monday. Jim, next slide, please. And this is a forecast of the percentage of our NetSec. NetSec, once again, is North, stands for North DuPage Special Education Co-op. You can see our percentages out of all the students, approximately three hundred students there. Fenton has, makes up thirteen percent of their population. Lake Park is also there. We are the only two high school in the NetSec program, Lake Park and Fenton. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of who, what other school districts are involved to, with the North DuPage Special Ed Co-op, and a number of students that are enrolled there per percentage.
Thank you, James. And the board policy, we didn't have a meeting, so we go on to, the, the next board meeting we'll have is Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, at seven fifteen P M, with a tentative board policy meeting scheduled at six P M, and a tentative board finance facilities meeting scheduled at six-thirty prior to the regular meeting. And, so we'll go to. That's, yeah, we'll, we'll announce that. For now, that's, that's the plan. May I have a motion? Okay, so we have any public people here? Okay, so may I have a motion, a second, to go into closed session for the purpose of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing, testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of the public body that is subject to the local government. Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted on, and held in accordance with the Act five Illinois C S one twenty slash two C one, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representations, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes employees, according to the law of five Illinois C S one twenty C two C two. Motion, please.
So move.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Regal?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Ridzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Ting Pong?
Yes, and we'll take a five, and we'll come back. Thank you.
Rego?
Roll call please. Rego?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Jalowick? Tingpapong?
Yes, we're back in open session. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn?
A moment.
Leo and Carey? Roll call.
Leo and Carey. Rego?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.